It being the appointed time, I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for January 6th, 2021. First one of those. Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Sheriff Collessi?
Here.
Commissioner Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Lottis?
Here.
Commissioner Trent?
Here.
Commissioner Swift?
Here.
Great. If you'll all join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have something from the council chambers. Yes. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Terrific, thank you. First item on the agenda is public communications. Lucas or Sherri, do we have any written or otherwise communications from the public tonight?
None that I'm aware of.
No.
Okay, very good. We'll go on to the consent item. Item one, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, December 16th of last year. Any, any comments or corrections? Looked good to me.
I'm of approval.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Nolan moves approval and Commissioner Lottis seconds. Any discussion? Sherri, a roll call, please.
Collessi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Yes.
Swift?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Very good. Before we do our discussion item, I'd like a roll, not a roll call, but we'll run down the line, starting with Commissioner Nolan. Site visits and ex parte contacts.
Um, I went by the site and I did not have any ex parte contacts.
Commissioner Lottis?
Same, I visited the site, but have had no ex parte comment, uh, contacts.
Commissioner Trent?
Yeah, same. Visited the site, no ex parte contacts.
And Commissioner Swift?
Yes, I went by, no ex parte contact.
Very good. And I visited the site, walked, walked all around as much as you could with the, the big wrought iron fence and had no ex parte contacts. So, next on our discussion is the conceptual review for the Wesleyan Church. Lucas, could you take us through that?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So, good evening, Commissioners. Lucas Seibert here, Community Development Manager with the city. The item we have reported tonight is a concept review. There is no decision being, being made at tonight's hearing. What we're really looking for is some feedback in regards to the proposal that's before the commission tonight, not a decision. Comments instead, and some feedback. So, the project itself is, is at the Wesleyan Church. The project consists of a proposed 694 square foot walkway cover. And that walkway cover would be between the sanctuary and the fellowship hall. It also includes the replacement of existing wood. Actually, it's an existing wrought iron gate which is facing Topo Topo Street. And that'll be replaced. In addition to that, there is the replacement of two damaged wood staircases on either side of the building. And that will be replaced with new steel framed stairs with wrought iron guardrails and corrugated metal roof to provide cover. And then in addition to that, there is already existing onsite parking. That onsite parking area will be repaved to improve really kind of some drainage that's currently existing onsite. And that's really what the proposal is for tonight, is a concept review. So, there is no decision. We're not asking for a decision tonight. Staff's not asking for a decision. The applicant's not asking for a decision. Instead, what we're looking for is feedback regarding the proposal itself. I do have the plans, if we want to speak to the plans. And if there's any questions of, of the commission, you know, the applicant and, well, the applicant as well as a representative for the Wesleyan Church is here today as well.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Nolan?
Yeah. Um, well, first of all, you know, I think it's great, you're updating things that need to get updated, such as the staircases and the fence. But the question that I had was, and maybe this is just more a graphic, a visual question, are you a kind of modernizing the overall look of the, the building? Um, or is that just maybe the way it's portrayed in the graphic as compared to what's existing?
Josh, do you want to speak to that or should I?
Pardon?
Yeah, I mean, is this time for me to speak now, or do you want me to?
Yeah, it was directed for you, Josh.
Well, this is really, this is really a time for asking questions of staff.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
And then we'll hear from the applicants.
Yeah.
And ask questions of them.
Okay, I'll just wait. That's fine. My goof. Apologies.
I, I have one question of staff.
Great, go ahead.
So, there, there, I'm not sure when the date, when was this building built? 19, oh, 1968? Was the building actually built in 68?
The, what we call a fellowship hall that faces Topo Topo was 1968. The sanctuary building was 1937.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
But, but there, so, has there been, but there's been no discussion about historic designation for the site, or is there anything, what, any status about any historic aspect to this?
Any other commissioners with questions for staff? Okay, I, I had a couple having to do with the admin report. The, this is on page two. The table called Basic Development Standards shows building separation standards. But when I read 10-2804, Table 3-2, that was specifically for residential property. Is there a corresponding set of rules for PL property?
There is not. And really where, where a majority of your PL development standards live is within Article 6, which is really where a lot of those development standards live for zoning.
Article 6, okay.
Yeah, so I, I took a look at that last, or is it last night or this morning, to, to kind of clear my head regarding it. The, within the PL zone, there's a lot of discretion that's given by the Planning Commission, and that's through the DRP process, the Design Review Permit, Permitting Process. And that's highlighted within the, the, the chart itself or table itself.
The, so you're saying, Chapter 2, Article 6 is the place to look?
Yeah, that's where it's going to live.
Because I couldn't, special purpose zoning districts.
It gives, it gives a lot of latitude to...
That's right, Table 2-7, I guess it is.
2-7, yes.
Okay, minimum setbacks, it says minimum setbacks required, see 10-2804. That's why I went to 10-2804. Maybe that's something we need to fix as we move through Title 10.
I mean, that could, that could be a fix. The question is, is where does it fix itself to? I think the, I think the real question, or maybe even the, the answer is, if it's providing some sort of discretion as it relates to development review or DRP as the, as the tool and mechanism, and it's giving the Planning Commission the latitude to review that in terms of consistency, then at that point, we will look at the findings as to whether or not it's justifiable.
Okay. I, I see in that table, Table 2-7, that the minimum lot size standards and density and the, oh, it says standards to be determined by the commission through the development review process. Okay.
Yep.
It's through the, yeah, DRP process.
I, I did have a second question. Why are we having a concept review instead of a DRP review?
Yeah, that, that seems to be a resounding question. And I know I spoke with Josh a little bit about it this morning. And I, and it was what I had, had already assumed, which is with concept reviews, you're looking for feedback. You're not looking for a decision. You're kind of testing the waters to see if it's a, if it's a design or a proposal that has some sort of merit or some sort of support, rather than just coming forward with a full DRP. I think that's what, what they were looking for here. I know Josh could probably fill in the blanks here if I've missed something here, but it's, it seems like that was the, and that's kind of the overarching view of a concept review. A lot of times it gets lost in the shuffle of it being a larger project, but really any project that's coming forward could potentially go through a concept review if it has some sort of design review or use aspect tied to it. Not required. It's always at the discretion of the applicant. So, in this case, the applicant chose to go through that concept review first.
Okay, okay. Is, does the concept review as a separate hearing, does that have a separate fee for making the ask?
Yes. Yeah, it's a minimal, it's a minor minimal fee. I want to say it's somewhere in the ballpark of $450 for us to review and process.
Okay.
And that allows then for the applicant to figure out if they want to move forward with heavy, heavier drawings that are going to be more expensive and spending more money to move forward.
I think my last, I, I have questions on page four and page five of the admin report also. Page four, in the review permit, the paragraph after the numbered sub paragraphs, it says the chosen material, this is for the stairways, I guess, is not compatible with the existing buildings onsite. Are there other buildings onsite that have stairways? I saw that the two wood stairways proposed to be replaced with metal. Are, are there others? Because I, I didn't understand the existing buildings onsite and the not compatible.
Yeah, and I think really what that was getting at was, you're talking about a corrugated material versus, versus wood. And I don't, I don't, I don't believe that there is any other corrugated material that's onsite. I know the...
You're talking about the walkway cover?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I think that's really what that's getting at. And I, I don't know that the harshness of it compatible is, is quite there. It's probably more of a consistency and review. And that's really the, that's another reason for the concept review. If there isn't a palette for that sort of design being intermixed with the proposal that, or the existing use that's already there, then I think this is the time for, for comments like that to come forward, to identify that, that revisions may be necessary to move forward.
Okay. Then the, the following paragraph on page four then talks about shed roof with, that does not mimic the residential character and design materials. You're talking about a wood frame and shingles that match what's on the sanctuary, I guess.
Right. Consistency throughout, I think is kind of the harmony.
It's a fair question to ask the applicants, I guess. Finally, on page five, talks about parking requirements and governed by the provisions of Section 10-2, Article 14, clearly, 1405, Table 3-5. I was not able to determine whether or not the current parking meets those requirements, but since it's not changing, maybe it's a moot point.
Yeah, I think there's two pieces to that. I think one, it probably is a moot point unless they were adding seats or increasing the size of any of these buildings. We'd be looking at, at the, and addressing parking onsite, knowing that we're talking about really kind of more cosmetic pieces to, to what we're talking about here and safety pieces in terms of the staircase. It's, it's less of an issue regarding parking. However, it would be nice to, to run those numbers and I, I really, we can work with the, with the architect and the applicant to, to address that.
Well, presumably if it's non-conforming, it's legal non-conforming at this point.
Right, right.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Nolan?
Yeah, I did have a question on page 505. And it was in regards to the, it says potocarpus, but it's potocarpus, but that's not a big deal. This is in regards to the landscaping trees. It says an existing 16-inch diameter tree will be removed. Um, and that it's not designated as a mature tree. Could you refer me to where in the code the definition is to the mature tree? I thought it was always 12 inches or greater, but maybe that was, it's been revised?
Um, no, it has not been revised. Let me look.
It's not, it's not a protected or a heritage tree.
Yeah, I think that's what it was getting at.
It will be a mature tree.
But it just says, oh. Okay, so you're saying it's because it's not historically or culturally designated, they don't have to have a permit? So, in the past, when you had a tree that was over 12 inches and it wasn't hazardous, did you have to get a permit? I'm just a little confused on that.
Yeah, I thought that that was part of it, for the requirement.
Lucas or, or Nikhil, can you tell us, is, is the removal of this tree going to require a tree permit?
So, if you go to the, I, I actually had some questions about that as well. I mean, Lucas, if you wanted to take, I'm gonna, I'm gonna double check the standards while, I mean, I think Lucas, you put that in there, so.
If we're looking at mature tree, it shall mean, I've got the definition here, mature tree shall mean, mean any tree species designated as such by resolution of the city council based on its historic, cultural, or other value as determined by the city council and which is equal to or greater than 12 inches in diameter as measured four and a half inches above the root crown.
Four and a half feet above.
Four and a half feet, my apologies, above the root, root crown, or in the case of a tree with more than one trunk, any such tree for which the sum of its two large trunks equals two or is greater than 14 and one-half inches as measured four and one-half feet above the root, the root crown.
So, just to, to kind of circle, square, square things there, the, the important part of this section is the very first part of the definition. It says, mature tree shall mean any tree designated by such a resolution based on its historic, by council, based on its historic, cultural, or other value. Well, the council has designated certain trees by resolution. And those trees that are by resolution are the ones that where a permit is required. And so, if you go to Section 4-1104 of the code, it says when permits are required. And so, it says, it spells out the different types of trees, including oak, sycamore, or heritage. And then it says an oak or a sycamore heritage or mature tree. Well, as far as I, I've, I looked through the code and I apologize, Kathy, you probably have a better pronunciation of this than me, but the, the particular tree, you're gonna have to help me with it, it's a...
Potocarpus. Potocarpus. It has a new genus, but that's okay, well.
I'll defer to you on that one. But that is not, has, as, there's nothing in our code that designates that as a, as a specific, as a particular heritage tree. The, as, I mean, I think as we've gone through this in, in our last couple meetings, we've kind of gone through, you know, there's specific trees that are, are protected under both state law and city law. And the, this particular tree, even though meets perhaps the size definition, hasn't been designated as a heritage tree. And so, no permit needed.
Find the list of these resolutions and designated trees.
So, the, the resolutions, there should be, if you look at the bottom of every code section, there is an ordinance, there's a listing of ordinances and resolutions at the bottom and when they were amended. So, um...
You're talking about for the specific section for when permits are required, or we're talking about?
Yeah. When permits are required. And then, on the definition section, there's also a list of ordinances that specifically, that are listed there, and those will have those particular. But the one way of finding out whether, like, an easy way of finding out whether the council has declared this to be a heritage, heritage tree or not, is to see whether it's, because, is to see whether it's been defined. So, if you go to definitions, you have oak tree, you have sycamore tree, which have all been specifically defined. And so...
Actually, yeah, because they're named. Um, I, yeah, I was just asking mainly because I know in the past, on projects that I worked on, and, and like I said, this may have changed, but if we had trees that were 12 inches in diameter or greater, they were just considered mature. And I'm just, yeah, I just wanted to find out for clarification. So, I'll have to go in there and look at that list.
Yes, it's 41103.
41103?
Yeah.
Okay.
Defines mature tree.
Well, yeah, I guess what I'm talking about is this apparent list resolution of specific trees. And I do, I already understand the one about the oaks and sycamores.
Yeah.
Because they're California native species and they're designated by the state.
Right.
But it was other species that I was wondering about.
And there may not be such a list that exists. We may have simply, in the past, I, I just adopted resolutions that specifically say that this tree, as cross-referenced by the code section, Calif, the California code section that specifically protects that tree, this tree is also protected in the city. But I don't think we've actually, and Lucas, you can correct me on this, I, I, as far as I can recall, I don't think we've actually specifically protected certain types of trees in the city. I know, in another city, for example, I know, that I, that I work with, they've by resolution protected wisterias. And that was done by resolution. And so, because they're, there's, they're really big there. But for a tree like this, unless there was a specific resolution, doesn't meet that. And so...
I, I'm not aware of a list currently, but Commissioner Nolan, we'll, I'll look into that a little bit further and get you, get you some information.
There is a sub, there's a subdirectory on the city website that is city council ordinances and resolutions.
Yeah.
You could probably search that site for the word tree, see what comes up.
Yeah, and, and they, there, there are older ordinances that I don't think have made it onto that site, but you, staff should have a copy.
Okay. I guess if you could get back to us on that one.
Yep.
Okay. Any more questions for staff? All right, then, could we hear from the applicant? I'm not sure, is it Master Thomas or the architect who wants to speak here, or both of you in turn? It's all up to you.
Well, I can, I can for, for sure speak about the design, since, since we, we were responsible for the design of the project. Good evening, Commissioners. It's been a while since I spoke to you guys. I think Kathy Nolan was the only one on board the last time I spoke to the commission. And so, it's been a few years. The, the basic impetus for this whole design project was twofold. One was replacing these old decrepit wood stairs. And two was, was this new walkway cover between the two buildings on the site. In regards to the staircases, they're, basically, they're exposed to the weather, the sun, the rain, and all that. So, it made sense in our minds to replace those with a steel staircase with a, with a steel cover, just to prevent them, the maintenance requirements for the wood, because they'd be having to pay that, paint that every year if it was wood and probably repairing it every year. So, the steel was more of a long-term, keeping it looking good the whole time. The walkway cover was also designed not only to match the, the steel staircase, but also due, due to the constraints of the two buildings, we did not want to try to tie the two buildings together with a, a wood covering because different, you know, different construction techniques over the decades, the, the potential for damaging differences of settlement and all that type of thing. It made more sense to have the, the structure separated from one of the, one of the buildings and attached to the other building, so we'd have an expansion gap there. In, in order to do that, it required using steel, because otherwise the spans get complicated and, and then in addition to that, would, would be also the maintenance issue. So, our desire, of course, is to use steel, both for the maintenance and just for the structural, ability, you know, the structural considerations. And tying into that steel, it, it just made sense to also use a corrugated roof. And that's a pretty typical, you know, architectural details, to have the steel columns, steel beams, and then having a nice corrugated roof on top. And in my opinion, that's kind of the only issue that's subjective. And that, and to answer a question brought up earlier, that was the main reason for bringing this in front of a, as a concept review rather than straight to a design review. In our, in our history of the Planning Commission, anytime we tried to bring something through a design review, we more than likely had to go through a second one because of questions like this coming up. So, we thought it, it would be who of us to bring it up as a concept review and get your, your opinion before we went to the next level. You know, the, the painting for the steel, there are options, you know, we, we like doing it as, as an accent color, but, but we could also tie it into the wrought iron that's existing there. There's a green wrought iron fence. You know, we, we feel architecturally, it'd be a little bit too much green at this point, so it'd be nice to have a different accent. Both these structures are also removed from the public, you know, street quite a ways. They are visible, but the, the walkway cover, you'd really barely see from the public. You'd only, only see it from underneath, so it, so that's another consideration. And that's, that's pretty much my spiel. I know the potocarpus, we, you know, we did our research on that tree and I did not see anywhere in any of the ordinances, I mentioned it specifically as a species. It does have to be removed just because it's, is damaging the, you know, an old footing there. So, that, that should be taken into consideration as well. But I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Go ahead, Commissioner Nolan.
So, you know, really, when we started out, and Kathy Lottis kind of, kind of indicated this as well, you know, I had this question, was there any historical context or, you know, thing that we needed to be aware of with, you know, either one of the buildings? Of course, they've been, you know, were built at different, in different eras. But I think this is just kind of a broadster question, and I'm, you know, I'm looking at your graphic on, on your, your sheet. Is the intention, not that it's necessarily part of what you're in for this evening, but are you looking to just kind of upgrade and kind of make it more contemporary all around? I mean, I'm looking at the building, color looks like it may be different. Are you looking at putting some black, down-the-road windows, black framed steel windows? I'm just trying to look at like the compatibility or if there's like a direction you're planning to go with even, you know, down the road. Or is the building going to stay the same color? You know, which, which may affect the, you know, the color of the staircases and the steel, et cetera, et cetera. So, now, you know, it, it does look, you know, have that somewhere between the 30s and the 60s, look, you know, with the wood, et cetera. But the photo's like a little more what I would call contemporary. The steel, tubular steel and the corrugated cover. So, that's kind of a general question, but maybe you can answer that.
Yeah, and, and a lot of that is just the artifacts of the software, anything on a computer rendering looks contemporary, no matter how, how much you try.
Let me ask him, we have that happen too, and like the color I'll print, I'll go, hey, that's not the color I wanted. But I just wanted to make sure on that one.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're, we're gonna be doing a lot of construction, so most likely everything will get, you know, re, or not everything, but a lot of it, the existing wood will get repainted, it's probably due for it. But, but then you may be able to, to answer that, you know, your intentions on repainting everything and whether you wanted to change the color palette? But my understanding is we'd stay with the, the green, but maybe, you know, a slight shade change or something, but...
Right. We, 20 years ago, when we painted, the sanctuary is more white, the other buildings are, have a little more color to them. And our intention there was to break it up a little bit, so we just didn't have half a block all the same, all the same color. As far as going forward, we've been very happy with this, with the green and with, with the color scheme. I mean, as far as the folks in our congregation, everybody's happy with it, although paint isn't what it used to be. And so, it desperately needs repainting as well at this point. So, that is something that, you know, is, is part of a larger multi-piece project that we have on, on the books. But this is the only... um, uh, on on the books, but this is the only construction aspect that that we that we have planned at this point.
Okay, so basically, the intention is to keep the the color of the existing buildings, but the new addition of the steel, the iron work will all be black. That's what you're proposing.
Said dark gray. I I I also wondered about the color because there's no, like, we don't have any, like, little color sample or anything.
Right, I was wondering about that too. So it's kind of like a charcoal, gunmetal.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be, I mean, I I call it off black, you know, I like to have off white. It's kind of like an off black. It's not quite solid black, just has a little, you know, has a little uh, color texture to it, you know. Um, it's not gonna be like a gunmetal gray, it'll be darker than that. It's just, it's it's, you can almost consider it black. That's sort of what it'll look like. And uh you know, the the metal, the the cover and the staircase, we're considering, you know, a this, an opportunity to give a little bit of an accent to these areas because they are um, you know, we consider entrances to this property. So kind of, we want them to somehow separate themselves from the buildings themselves to show here's how you, you know, enter the 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 two-story building and here's how you enter, you know, the breezeway between these two structures. So that that's kind of the reasoning for the color change. Um, you know, i- if it was required, we could can paint that steel to match everything else, but that in our in our architectural opinion becomes a slightly monotonous.
I'm just looking for, I I mean, I understand, I'm I'm not opposed to replacing these the staircases and or adding a cover. I think it's more the compatibility of um, the colors, the materials with the existing building that I, that's where my question is. And I'm just trying to get a vision of, you know, what you're intending even down the road with the materials and the color, et cetera.
Uh, Commissioner Trent?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just gonna piggyback on that. I just had a question on um, when the I've I was, I've, when I drove by the the property, yeah, it looks like obviously the both properties do need paint. Uh, the building that was the fellowship hall nineteen, the nineteen sixty-eight building looks like some of the fascias, you know, decayed a little bit, so that might, you know, obviously need to be redone. And so I was just curious on when um, those plans are, because you're gonna have this obviously new construction, which will look great. And then you still have some, you know, a building that looks a little dilapidated, and then you got, you know, the one from nineteen thirty-seven that needs some painting. So it's just, it's just kind of odd, you know, where you'll have aspects of really brand new contemporary stuff and then stuff that's, you know, from nineteen thirty-seven, right next to something that's in the sixties that kind of needs to be painted. So just curious.
I certainly the the paint, the pro- the construction project and the paint are all part of a larger, a larger uh, uh, program that that we're working on. And yet this is the most significant piece, so we're leading with that. And also with the fascia on the fellowship hall. Uh, it's my understanding of the design that 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 uh, that that would very much be a part of the construction piece would be to take care of the fascia on the on the fellowship hall.
Oh, that'd be great. Okay, cool. So the, so just so I understand, this this construction piece would move forward and then at a later date, the fascia and the paint and everything else would get done, is that?
Well, the fascia would be part of the construction project because it does affect that that uh, west roof line. As far as the rest of the property being painted, that's the next step then.
Okay.
After the, after the stairway and covering, yeah.
Right, and I guess
I mean, I, it I don't know, it makes sense in the plans, if you look at that that rendering on the first sheet showing the walkway, you you can see at the uh we're only keeping like the first ten feet of that fascia just to keep the front elevation showing, but we're to 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 get the water flow off this new walkway onto the existing roof, we're cutting that fascia back. And once we start cutting that fascia, from the looks of it, it's all gonna crumble. We're gonna have to replace that fascia or 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 patch it up and repaint it anyway. So that's, that's on board.
So I I guess that one of the, what I'm trying to figure out is what the timeline might be between the two pieces of the bill?
Well, funding, of course, is always a a challenge with nonprofits and churches and such, but but in terms of our sequence of events, because believe me, inside there's you know, in nineteen um, nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand, we dropped a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars into those buildings and, you know, on on projects. And twenty years later now, we could drop another hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So uh, it'll be, the paint is the next step after the the this project.
Right.
But it might be a few years.
I certainly hope it's not a few years.
I understand, okay. I was just trying to get that uh, timeline in my head just to kind of understand. So thank you.
The the nearest I can say right now is it would be next.
Got it. No, that's fair. Okay, thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Nolan?
Yeah, just, this is just a little feedback for when you do come back with the DRP. It would be helpful, even if if the painting is not part of the DRP that you're gonna be doing. I think, you know, if you could define that in the future, here here's our palette, here's here's our bigger intention, but for the DRP, we're only gonna be doing this part. I think it would help, at least would help me see what your your bigger vision is and the compatibility of this portion to what's gonna be coming down the road. Because I would hate to see you come back later and we go, oh darn, it just doesn't work. After, when you started to paint with this, what you're doing here.
No, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Lottis, you had a question?
Um, what, so so did you, how much did you think about replacing um, the stairs with with wood? Did you, did you talk that through at all and its life expectancy and and what the actual maintenance would be? Just just asking.
We we did, I mean, because there there is a, obviously the steel is gonna be cost a lot more upfront, but during the lifespan of the stairs, it it'll more than pay for itself because of the maintenance upkeep. Um, the, like I said, that's exposed to the weather. If you're gonna get rain, you know, when we do have rain, we're gonna get rain and sun and rain and sun on there. Um, that just is, you know, obviously horrible on the wood. Um, so so it just made more sense, both from a a a cost standpoint, but also architecturally, it's just it adds another element to to give bring some more interest to this project because that 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 building that the staircase is at is is relatively nondescript, you know, rectangular two-story building. So it's that, it is also adding an architectural element to it.
A simple, straightforward building. A great idea. Wonder, you know, um, I I mean, I actually, I love wrought uh, uh, corrugated um, metal and all that. Um um, but I do have concerns about compatibility as stated by Kathy Nolan. I think the other um concern I'm having with this is maybe the method of attachment of the um, roof. Because uh, you have these vertical supports that go all the way from the underside of the roof all the way down to the ground and it seems like a lot of times, like, you know, the these corrugated roofs are um they have a, they might have like the um they don't have these these pillars that go all the way down to the ground. Is there another method of support that wouldn't be so quite so visible?
Like a ledge?
Just, you know, just just like the angle, the angle thing up at the top or something. I I, anyway, just to me, these vertical steel pillars are not, are not all that attractive, to be honest.
Yeah, the the issue always comes up with when we're trying to tie into existing buildings, you know, whose construction is is, you know, is not up to current standard. So we wanted to try to keep the structural portion of this, the the staircase and the roofs separate from the building, just to prevent any um you know, a- any any um debilitation to the existing building. And that that's the reason for having that, you know, the things like expansion joints with different materials come into play, um, struc- the structural connection will come into play. Um, we haven't, this has not been sent to a structural engineer yet, so you know, these some things may change during the structural um, review of this. Um, this is just based on our our past experience, the the easiest way to get the structural requirements for that covered roof um, without damaging the existing building or or compromising the existing building.
But there might be alternative methods that would be less um, less um uh, intrusive. I mean, I to I I don't know, the it looks like a, you've got a downspout coming, a black painted downspout coming all the way down from the roof, you know. Ordinarily, you want to hide those kinds of things. And I I I do, I do um, I think that's what I have the most trouble with, is these big vertical black, heavy black lines that are going to, that I see uh, doesn't really fit with the building. The rest of it might be, might be okay, and maybe it's just a color issue. Um, so.
Yeah, there is a potential to paint a a lighter color, um, so it it disappears more into the building.
And it's, you've got it going right in front of the windows. Um I don't know.
Yeah, it's really hard to support that roof without some kind of a column because, you know, it's it'd be a big cantilevered roof otherwise, and and there's really no other way to attach it to the building.
Hey, I wanted to also clarify um, to Lottis's, Lottis's point as well. The the columns that we're we're talking about here that really come almost two stories in full from from the very top and and provide support for that corrugated. They, are they, they're not protruding into the windows, they're right up to the the windows? Or am I not reading that, one of these elevations?
Perspective, I think on page G zero point zero one um, is at an angle, so it's hard to tell whether the column are in front of it.
If you want to turn to our sheet A one O two, which shows the the black and white, not the pretty pictures, but it shows our elevations.
Right.
Um, you can see that those columns are actually um, about they're four or five feet away from the existing building wall.
Right.
So they're not gonna be right in front of the window.
Right, that's, well, it's it's pushed away from the building, but then also it's not in front of the window.
Yeah, it's not directly in front.
Pushed up against the window, but it is in front of the window, just
Uh, now, if you look at the elevation on that sheet A one O two, you'll see it's just to the side of it.
Okay.
And and four or five feet away from, you know, four and a half feet away from it.
I will have to admit, if if the column was in front of that window, I'd be, I would be
Yeah, we we wouldn't want that either.
Oh, okay, I see. It's really uh, lined up with the edge of the window going straight down to the edge of the landing for the stairway.
Yeah, it forms both the structural support for that staircase as well as the structural support for the roof. So it's
Well, I I, the problem is, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I certainly have my own personal taste, but I I'm not trained in um, aesthetic renovations like an architect is, but I just, I I am having a little trouble with the domination of this backside of the building by all this black, heavy black. So.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Swift, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things. I just want to touch on the on the steel versus wood. Um, you know, based on my experience, you can do a lot. You can use a lot, you can use steel to do a lot less than using wood. So if this was wood, you'd probably have a lot more upright beams and posts and stuff like that, would, which would probably clutter the windows versus going to steel, you're gonna get more integrity and more strength, so you don't need as many upright posts to achieve the same product. Um, so that was just my spin on that. And then um, going back to page three of five in the project description, um, I just noticed that there is a lot of other work being done other than the staircases and the and the awning. Um, you know, filling in some doors, removing some air conditioners. Um, and then underneath the back stairs, they're gonna enclose like that storage room. And it looks like they're gonna increase the the square footage of that storage room underneath the stairs. And then also doing some workout in the parking lot to fix some drainage issues. So um, I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget about that. And if anybody had anything to say about those items, um, you know, now's the time. I was just wondering, my point was the stucco, there's gonna be a lot of stucco patching. Is if that's gonna match the color of the existing buildings, or if that's gonna change because of the future color or painting that might happen down the road that uh, Commissioner Trent brought up. So I I don't have any problems or issues with the design, just wanted to make sure that, you know, we we cover all these these items.
Yeah, I mean, that that, especially on the rear stair, um, it it's to increase that storage and hide the AC units so that they're not, you know, exposed to the elements in public view. Um, our intention is to to paint that or have that stucco be the same color as the existing walls and not stand out. Um, right, for, yeah, for sure. Um, and then the same on the front, you know, having more storage just allows them to not have stuff open and in the public view. So, and then, yeah, there are, there, uh, it's a few uh, minor modifications to the existing rear wall of the sanctuary where um you know, removing, moving a AC unit uh, and and moving a doorway, so um that is part of it. That's that's relatively minor, but yeah, all the patching would match existing colors.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lottis.
A couple other questions. Um, so, so what uh, Commissioner Swift said was interesting. So if you were rebuilding the them as wood stairs, which they are currently they wouldn't look, you couldn't make them look like they do now? That's what
Not by current codes, no. I mean, right now, they, I mean, there's very little uh, structure to it. And and looking at it, current codes would require six by six or eight by eight wood posts everywhere, and there'd be three or four of them going across the face. It'd be a much more massive structure if we were to replace it, uh, you know, try to replace it as is with wood. That's the nature of, yeah, current codes.
That's, that's very interesting. Um, okay, and what were the, what's, what color and what are the materials of the pavers? I think that's in the the walkway, the entrance where you're putting the um, the overheads, the overhead, overhang.
Yeah, under the walkway. Um, the exact color is yet to be determined. Um, you know, it'd be something not exactly terracotta, but something in that kind of palette, um, something that would complement the existing buildings more than, more than anything, because it's gonna be going up against both walls there. Um, so the exact color has not yet been determined.
And will that, will that extend all the way, I guess, will that extend back to the classroom building? Or it'll just be between the sanctuary and the fellowship hall? Is that, and then you would stop it at a logical point, I guess.
Yeah, if you, I mean, you could, if you want to know exactly, you can look at sheet A one O one, our sheet A one O one. It has the the walkway cover plan there, and it would basically stretch from the existing sidewalk back to um, where the ramp for the entrance at the back of the sanctuary is.
Okay.
And then then from there, it'd go back to concrete. And all that concrete would have to be redone because um, you know, the steel columns are gonna have base plates or cantilevered footings and all that. So all, and and then in addition to drainage issues, so most of that concrete beyond that point will have to be um, cleaned up as well.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I had a couple of questions. Um as I look at the sheet A one point zero two, it looks like the existing eaves, which are fairly wide, I guess, on the classroom building, they don't quite cover the stairway, is that correct?
That's correct. I think, yeah, I think they're only like two and a half feet wide.
And so the the uh, corrugated steel roof that you would propose, um it does not touch the building. It's gonna be under the eaves so that the water runoff from the existing shingles would hit the corrugated metal roof and then be taken farther out so that when it does fall off, it's beyond the edge of the stairway?
Correct. But that that's the main reason for that, the new corrugated roof covering is to protect the stairway. It gives them, you know, all the way from the sanctuary or fellowship hall, a covered walkway into that second floor of the classroom building.
Okay, um, the the classroom building itself, it is, as has been noted, is kind of plain right now. Um, and I like the idea of of adding some color on each side of that. I am, I am just curious about your, your thoughts in this area. The rest of the pro- the rest of the buildings there are either white or I'll call it shades of brown. And and what you're proposing is one or possibly more, I'm not sure, shades of gray here. And I'm, I'm just curious, what, what made you go that direction?
Well, again, it it, you know, we're we're trying to, I I don't want to say accentuate, but we're give a little of interest and and have something slightly different to kind of stand out from the rest of the building, just to dress it up a little bit. Um, you know, if you look at other buildings in the area, not necessarily adjacent, but um, similar similar ideas have happened in the past where you you just bring it, you know, in in addition to the structural issue, you you give it a little bit more interest. Um, and you know, when reading through the code, in fact, it it talks about, um, and that's kind of one of our uh reasons we did this. It talks about um, high-quality architectural design. um, high-quality architectural design should be employed to avoid monotonous building elevations and create architectural interest, and that was kind of part of our intention.
Yes.
Um, so, you know, we, you know, you know, we could give it the same palette as the building, but then from the street, it would just disappear and you'd be looking at the monotonous building again. So this is just a way for it to stand out. And the color hasn't been finalized, you know, it's not going to be, we don't want it to be a a straight black. Um, we're we're thinking dark gray with a little bit of the tones of the green into it, so they, so they do complement each other. Um, and that's something we'd bring, you know, obviously at the design review, we'd bring a palette to accentuate, you know, the the color choice. So you get a better idea of that, but but we do want something to be more of an accent than a blending in.
Sure, and and I I recall the the shingles on all the buildings right now are various lighter shades of brown, I'll say.
Um, I think the classroom is actually a greenish color, it's almost pretty close to the uh the trim color.
Ah, okay.
Um, and then the other buildings are brown, so you know, there's already a difference, you know, there, so you know, the.
I guess I was looking more at the sanctuary, and I was just curious why you would have picked a dark gray instead of a dark brown, for example. Just what were your thinking there?
Well, again, it, because we're there's multiple, you know, like you said, we have the white, we have the the beige off brown of the the palette, then we have the darker brown of the roof on the sanctuary, and we have the green of the trim, the green of the roof. There's a lot of different colors that we'd be trying to tie in. And uh, as an accent color, this is the one, you know, this kind of dark gray color would be the one that would be able to be um to tie into all those colors and um and complement them without going too far afield of of that palette. Um, you know, we we try to go too green, we're we're moving away from the, you know.
I wasn't objecting, I just interested in your thought, your thought of train of thought there.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions from commissioners?
Oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Nolan, please.
Yeah, uh, early we were talking about the the corrugated overhang. And so basically, the water is just going to run off into the parking lot, and you're going to be uh redoing the drainage, is that correct? Or do you have gutters on that?
Um, we are redoing the drainage. I I think we'd like to put a gutter there, just because if you're parking right in front or walking right in front, you don't want to, you know. Yeah, um, the, and what we're looking into is some ways to to hide, you know, the gutter's okay, but trying to hide a downspout or somehow tie it into the columns without it being too obtrusive. Um, so that's one thing we're still looking at. And then definitely at the walkway, be, for sure, because the walkway, we have a lot more traffic going, you know, underneath, and that and that's easier. Um, the walkway at the front towards um, uh, Topa Topa Street, um, I call it the front, it's really the side, but the Topa Topa Street part where the walkway comes out to, um, that water will be going onto the existing roof and then into a gutter system, so that water is contained. It's more the the stair roof gutter that is is still kind of up in the air.
Uh, just a quick question. I noticed on the um on the classroom building in the back, obviously you have two um, two shades or two two covers, and it connects to the walkway. Um, I was just wondering if there's any connection to the sanctuary, because it looks like the sanctuary has the ramp there. Um, and it's got the the roof line. Do the roof lines connect? Because it, the drawings are just hard to tell if the roofs connect or if they're separated. Just curious on how that that transition is going to work.
The the existing roofs between the sanctu, between the.
There, there, yeah, the sanctuary has a a roof line on the back where the ramp is, looks like the back entrance to the sanctuary.
Yes.
Yeah, and then you also have a, on the, on the classroom, you have a a lower overhang, a shade. Um, and it looks like they run into each other, the roof lines run into each other. I was just curious how that works, if they're going to be separated, they're going to be connected, or?
They, they won't be connected because they're trying not to tie everything together like that, but they will be close enough that you could walk from one, underneath one roof to the other roof and not get rained on. And I believe the root, the existing entrance roof to the sanctuary will slightly be over the uh walkway roof.
Okay, okay, all right. I was just curious on how that was going to work, because it was hard to tell how that was going to play out, so. Thank you.
And I just have one question. You might have already covered it, but so is there any uh re-roofing in the future with either building, or is that, are these roofs there for the duration?
I can speak to that. The sanctuary was re-roofed about twenty months ago, so the sanctuary is good to go. Uh, the uh classroom building was re-roofed in nineteen ninety nine. And the fellowship hall was re-roofed just a couple of years before that, so probably mid nineties.
Okay.
So the fellowship.
Those roofs are nearing the end of life, then, yeah.
The, oh wait, the fellowship, but the, but the um but the classroom building, which has the grayish.
Yes.
Where that was in ninety nine.
Correct, there are two thousand, part of that big project.
That's, that's there for another, what, twenty years?
I hope so. I want to be gone by the time that.
Okay, so we are dealing with the existing roof colors and trying to work between that color, those colors and the um the trim color and coming up with something that visually harmonious.
Yeah, I was wondering myself if a new roof on the classroom building might be one of those successive phases, and whether you would be thinking of making it uh more like the sanctuary roof, but it sounds like they're both going to be here for a while.
I, I believe so, yeah. Yeah, it, the classroom roof is is not one of our, uh, on our current list of projects, no.
Okay. Uh, well, you asked for feedback in this concept review. Um, any of the commissioners would like to summarize your thoughts here, because we're trying to help these folks as best we can to uh prepare them for a DRP hearing.
Yeah.
Commissioner Nolan.
Um, thank you. I I would just say, um you know, it looks as though what you're proposing, um, you know, has a little more modern contemporary look to it. Um, but I think when you come back for the DRP, it would be really helpful to have like this color palette, even if it's something you're not going to be doing initially, but maybe there was like mention of it, color and material palette, so we had a, an idea of what the bigger picture is here. Because I I'm like, while I'm sitting here, I'm looking on uh Google Maps, Google Earth. And yeah, there's a lot of, you know, kind of nude, uh, brown uh natural tones that are there already, so I I think we just need to really see what what you're proposing as far as the uh the overall picture.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I I would agree with Commissioner Nolan. I think if you can maybe come back and show kind of what your vision is, what you're thinking on how to connect all of the three buildings um aesthetically, you know, with the new enhancements, because, you know, as Commissioner Nolan mentioned, the new enhancements are very contemporary. Uh, mostly the other structures are a little older, a little dated, uh, different architectural designs on different buildings, different colors on different buildings, you know, so just kind of what you're thinking long term, um, I think might help. Obviously, you know, you don't have the funds to do it, which is fine, but you know, just like, here's what we're thinking eventually where we want to get to. I think that would help.
Yep, Google Maps is a big help there. I can see that you have three buildings and three different roof colors right now. So a challenge to find something that that accents uh but is still compatible with all of them.
Right.
Can I, can I ask a question? I I know a couple of meetings ago, we mentioned um, the house up on Delora with the bright blue roof. And kind of, kind of brought up what makes Ojai unique and what makes Ojai Ojai? And I think we need to not forget about that. Um, what what Josh is doing is uh is an architectural piece, it does stand out. And uh, it does bring attention to the church and blending everything in kind of doesn't make it uh us. So I, that's, I just wanted to throw that out there to consider as a as a group here that uh Ojai's Ojai because not all houses are the same color, not all roofs are the same color, and they might have a black staircase that might look really good on it and draw attention to it, so just wanted to play the other side and uh, you know, add my support to it.
I think that's good. Two of our grandchildren live in Austin and have T-shirts that many of you may have seen. They say, keep Austin weird. Um, we might have T-shirts that said, keep Ojai quirky.
Quirky's a good word.
So, Commissioner Trent, you have some last thoughts for the applicants?
No, like I said, uh, again, um, I think having some sort of vision, some sort of plan for what, you know, how you're going to tie it all in, and if you don't want to tie it in either, that's fine, too. To say, hey, we're just going to upgrade the existing paint, and we're going to match it to what it is now. There are going to be three different looking buildings, and that's how we want it. I think that's fine, too. I think just, you know, have some sort of idea on where you want to go, um, I think would be, would be helpful.
Okay. Uh, any last words from Commissioner Swift? Okay, um, I have to tell you, I like, I like the looks of the project. I am not put off by the uh corrugated metal walkway cover. Uh, first of all, you're only going to see it as sort of a a dark overhead, a dark ceiling over that, and um uh, it seems like a a practical solution to keeping the walkway dry. Uh, as far as as the stairways, uh, I understand the need for a long-term solution that doesn't require constant maintenance and repair. And and looking, I see you have three different roof colors, and you have at least two different wall colors amongst the three buildings, so it's going to be a challenge, architectural challenge perhaps, to find something that's compatible, but uh but gives the classroom building certainly the accents that it needs to to uh be more noticeable, and I think that would be good for you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I like the project overall. I appreciate that you're, that you're trying to uh upgrade the parking lot, fill in the low spots, so you don't have people driving through pools of water uh when they're coming to or leaving church in wet weather. Overall, I think I'd say press on.
Thank you.
I, I would just like to um add that, though, that um I, I would like to uh you to think about um uh something as an alternative to a pretty dark black, or or, you know, just just something a little bit that's not quite such a harsh contrast, but because I'm not sure we want to highlight a steel staircase against a building, but maybe, um, maybe that's okay, and I, I mean, I appreciate all your efforts and I appreciate you taking the extra effort to come to concept review, definitely. Thank you very much.
If you were to uh change out the windows and have have contrasting frames, that would give you another accent. But um absent that, the stairway and the supports for the roof are about all you can do, I think, to accent those buildings. Is there anything else you'd like to ask of the commission?
Just to clarify, so this, this uh potocarpus tree, we don't need a permit to take that out? Am I understanding correctly? Because we'd like to get that removed fairly soon.
Oh, that's, that's a question for me. Um, let me look into that further.
Lucas will get back with you on it.
Yeah, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, very good.
As I know, it's oaks and sycamores and designated heritage trees are the only ones that cannot be taken out. But Lucas will answer the question.
Yeah, yes.
What is a, I mean, I think the commission only has a broader policy question about that in terms of what okay, what is a mature tree, and do we have, do we have specific additional resolutions that address specific trees or specific other species or exactly?
Anything beyond oaks and sycamores, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as I had told uh Commissioner Lottis or Commissioner Nolan earlier, I'll, I'll get you guys some information on that um after this meeting.
Thanks.
And he'll get back with the applicants, and then we'll all be prepared for the DRP hearing. Okay, well, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Wish you well with the project.
Yeah.
Exciting.
Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you again sometime soon, I hope.
Yes, as soon as possible, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item three is uh information items, first director decisions. First time I've appeared outside of minutes.
Yes, Steve, would you tell us about removing that one hazardous coast live oak?
Yeah, be happy to. This is about a, about a twelve inch, eleven, twelve inch diameter uh live oak behind our garage. There's a walkway there that's maybe four feet between the back of the garage and the chain link fence that divides our property from the flag lot behind it. And I, my, uh, actually, our yard guy pointed out a, a uh a serious, I'll say a serious defect in the tree in that for about the first three or four feet up from the ground, um, it's blackened, the barks falling off, et cetera. And um, so that's when I called Mike Anaba to him, have him come out and look, because I knew if you're talking about an oak tree that hasn't fallen over on its own, you certainly need to uh get an arborist report before you do anything else.
Sounds like.
And um, his, his report, I guess the the report, it, it was um it was there, did you, well, that's not a director's exemption, that's just a tree permit. But the report said that that the oak tree was decayed and diseased.
Yeah.
And he recommended that it be removed as soon as possible uh so that it didn't fall and either um force us to remove or replace a, a, a tall chain link fence or replace some part of the garage.
Right.
Um, as far as the sycamore out front, he also took a look at that, it's part of the arborist report. And he recommended that um that we do some pruning at the top. He said nothing, nothing as large as four inches, but the tree has has been topped in the past, he said. You can see it when you look at a tall, a a sycamore in particular, I guess. Uh, if you, if you look up, up through the foliage, and there's a point where there are several branches that sprout from the same point along a major trunk. That's where the tree's been topped in the past. And it, uh, this is all quite a ways off the ground, forty or fifty feet off the ground, probably. And he said, you're getting too much top foliage there, you need to prune it. And the tree in particular that was covered in the report had had a second, had a main trunk, and then a second trunk that made kind of an elbow. It went straight out and then turned abruptly straight up, and that would have been a failure point, he said, if there was not enough of the top foliage removed. And of course, right after that, we had that big windstorm. Um, so I was glad the work was done. But the uh, the, after the pruning was done, then there was a cable that was put between the two trunks. So now they will support each other. And even if the tree sprouts more foliage in the next twenty years, which I probably won't worry about, the two trunks will will help support each other. Um, and uh, as I, I added a letter to the back of the application for the tree permit, noting that we have planted six more trees in the yard um to replace the oak tree.
I strongly commend you for that.
So.
And I, I should also note that in our code, it does not require when the tree's been deemed hazardous for it to be replaced, but as, as I've noted um in in previous meetings, I always ask the question. While I can't require it, I certainly ask the question.
Can, can I ask a question about a tree that's not on this? Um, what, what's the status of the tree removal? There was a very large tree, and I didn't, didn't look back at street view to see what it might have been. Uh, but the stump is still there at signal and summer.
Um.
You know what, that, that should have had a permit, but I don't know, um, I, they.
What kind of tree was it? Was it a pine?
I don't know. It was, it's a huge tree, you can see the stump right there at the intersection, and.
Which corner is it on?
Um, it's on the corner in front of the apartment building.
Corner of.
That'd be the southeast. That'd be the southeast corner.
Uh, uh, southeast quarter, probably, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um, and.
It was on the city property.
Of Signal and what was the other?
Yeah, there were, there were, there was a crew cutting it down. I drove by on a Friday afternoon just before five about. A week ago.
Okay.
And then I went by, I I noticed it later, it was I, then they left it. It was kind of just a stick, you know, the trunk. And then the whole thing is cut down, but it's a, it at the ground level, there's a huge uh.
But you said it was signal.
Very large diameter.
Lucas, you have an email in it. You have an email on it I sent you.
Okay.
The top of your emails, I just sent it to you.
Okay.
And there was another tree that was seemed to be cut down and it was just, it was, I I can't remember where that was, but it was just topped initially, so I assume that they were.
Well.
Taking the whole thing down.
I'm just gonna, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
We're only looking at director's decisions that I've made that are that are identified in this list here. Um, Commissioner Lotis, if you want to talk offline in regards to some of these other trees, I I welcome that conversation, but we're only looking at. Decisions that have been made.
Oh, I I understand. I'm just asking.
I'm just, I'm just saying, we're we're diving into and looking at very specific pieces here, and I don't want to get into those.
Oh, no, I'm only asking if you're, if the city is aware of it, if you're looking into.
I can talk to you, I can absolutely talk to you offline about it, um, just not not at a public setting like this without.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions?
If I if I could just add a point here for the new, especially for the new commissioners, um, is that, um, you know, we want to, if um, if it's not on the agenda. Um, you can always raise it with staff directly. Um, um, it's a Lucas, and then we could, you know, that way we stay on the agenda. And if we want to add it to the agenda, you can always uh, request. Um, staff to add it to the agenda, so it'll be at the next meeting. Yeah.
Right.
So, but Nikhil.
Uh-huh.
I mean, essentially, okay, maybe, uh, essentially, all I wanted to ask was, is the city aware of a tree that was cut down at Summer and? Signal, that's all I was asking, really.
Right. I I understand.
That acceptable or not?
Well, I understand, and and I mean, if if there was, for example, an agendized item saying general questions to staff. I I think that would be acceptable under this. Right now, here, the agenda item is director's decisions, and so, I mean, I'm just being, I mean, I always defer. On this side of the Brown Act, um, just because, um.
Okay, so do we need to have an item that appears on our agenda regularly that says, you know, questions of staff?
I mean, it.
I I feel like we should be able to ask questions about.
Hold on, hold on a second, Commissioner Lotis. I think you need to understand some things here. There are lots of trees and lots of questions that come by regarding trees that are either removed. Or questions about trees that just don't fit within the criteria of our tree permit process. Um, I probably see at least a dozen of those that don't even. That just end up going through without having to, that don't meet the litmus test of being either a sycamore or um. You know, they don't, they don't meet the criteria that that fall into the criteria of you seeing it requiring a tree permit, and that's what I'm talking about here. Um, I have absolutely no problem having a conversation offline or even responding to an email, but not at the public setting.
And I, again, I I I, again, I have no, no, there's no issues with the questions themselves. It's just that, you know, when it's an, there's an agendized item. Um, the Brown Act requires that we speak about agendized items and don't discuss, because, you know, a general question then turns into specifics on 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 the actual. Uh, specifics on maybe a particular case, and that case isn't currently agendized. So when we mention, you know. Uh, a particular tree on Signal and Summer, that's not not agendized, and so we we are now discussing things that are not on the agenda. And that is a potential Brown Act violation. So I just want to, I I always err on the side of caution when it comes to Brown Act. And so if there is this particular thing, we you can, we can, any commissioner can raise it with staff. Um, any, and then we can all, there's a process to add things to the agenda as well. Um, there's a process to put things on future agendas, and I think that's probably the best way of 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 navigating this. Um, so that we, you know, avoid any liability and we also kind of stay stay on on topic here.
And again, I encourage and I I look forward to having that conversation.
Well, it's time to get ahold of you, Lucas. I just, you know, we're here all together. It's a public meeting. And I I just don't, I if uh, if we need to have something on the agenda that says commissioner questions and comments, I guess we need to put that on there.
Even.
I'd like to tag on to that, Nikhil. Um, I'm also on the um, Ojai Valley Sanitary District Board. And every one of our regular meetings. Um, has two agendized items at the at the very end. One is general manager comments and the other is. Director comments or questions. And um, and I'm wondering, couldn't we just add that as a standard part of our agenda?
Yes, we could, yeah.
Okay.
And so.
I I would ask that that we do that, that gives Lucas. An opportunity to talk about anything that he wants to talk about, and it gives the the commissioners a chance to ask questions. Um, because it's now an agendized item. Could we do that?
I don't have any problem if the if the staff needs to say, we're looking into that, you know, period, end of story. I, you know, I just, if I asking.
But yeah, it's it's not an answer to a specific question that we're worried about.
Yeah.
It's it's the formulation here of the of the whole process.
Right.
But if we could add those two items to the agenda. Um, and they would come just before what we won't have tonight, which is our. City Council liaison speaking. Which is not on the agenda after all. Think that should, that should be a standard piece of the agenda as well. Uh, then I think we could, we could handle it. We could handle both staff comments and commissioner comments and questions. Under informational items. And then we should have uh, we should have a space for our city council liaison, whether that person actually attends or not. Okay, uh, let's go on then, are there any other questions about the director decisions? I see there's an exemption. And there is a uh, home occupation permit. Not particularly exciting. Okay, let's go on to item four, uh, future agenda items. Lucas, you want to give us a preview of four oh six East Topa Topa? It looks like it's a residence right next to the car wash.
Yes. It's a uh, and I think you'll you'll be seeing this. We just noticed it, actually. It's gonna be going in the paper. Um, four oh six East Topa Topa Street. It's a single-story, um, single-family residence. Within the VMU, and they're wanting to do an addition to the property. And the challenge there is they don't, they don't have parking for it, so you're gonna be seeing some creative um, solutions to that. Uh, solutions that I don't have the power to approve, so it's gonna be coming before the planning commission for for consideration.
You're saying they want additional parking?
Well, as a part of, as a part of the requirements for doing an addition, you have to provide the necessary um, parking onsite. Um, right now, they have, they have no parking onsite. Um, the building itself, when you see this, the the width of the lot in relationship to the width of the building.
It's pretty cozy already.
It's already cozy. There is so, there's a challenge regarding the location of of parking to the rear. A significant challenge, um, meaning the building's in the way. So they've got to figure out, they're working through some creative solutions and. And it's it's something that's gonna be coming before this commission for for discussion and consideration.
Okay, and that'll be a DRP?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then we may have good old Title X raising its ugly head again, okay? Anything else you see coming?
Uh, those are the two things that I see on the immediate horizon. There's some other things that are that are being. That are in kind of the uh, oven right now. We'll see if they'll be ready by then, by the first part of February.
Okay, um, I s- I I recall there was some discussion some meetings ago about. Uh, a church over on the east end, north of Ojai Avenue. Is that the director's exemption? On the sixteen twenty San Gabriel? No, that's the north, north side of San Gabriel.
That's um, it's north, I mean, it's east of San Gabriel. San Gabriel is being used as as the address. Um, but the reality is, is that that those buildings are are situated with, generally within that area. Um, but certainly north of Ojai Avenue. Um, and that one, actually, it went forward as a DE. And the reason why this additional DE was was brought forward was um, the porch portion. Or structure that was originally gonna be replaced. Um, once they removed it, it kind of gave room and provided some clarity. Um, from a design standpoint, once they cleaned it up and they decided that they didn't want to move forward with replacing. The uh, I guess it's referred to as a trellis. Um, so when they didn't remove, replace the trellis, um, that was in. In direct conflict with what the DEs had in in terms of conditions. So they had to go forward with a new DE, and that's what you're seeing here with this director's exemption.
Okay.
Not impacting it from a square footage standpoint, but some minor aesthetic um, considerations.
Right? Any other questions from the commissioners about item four? All right, then um. All other avenues being exhausted at. Seven twenty-seven PM, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Hi.
Hi.